Hello, Mr. O'Malley?
How are you?
Still training?
How are you?
Are you geared up where you can train? Good.
How you doing?
5:30 AM.
I can't believe it.
I was still asleep at 5:30.
I need to take you to Oklahoma for about a week and you'll see what cold is.
5:30 I would imagine.
And other than that, go Chicago. You'll see what cold is.
I would definitely pass on Chicago.
I was just there at the big engineering conference and, you know, we had, we probably had 3,000 engineers there and he made an announcement at the big meeting. Don't walk by yourself. They had like 25 guests getting knocked in the head, walking by themselves.
My car replaced?
I was at the American, next to mine.
Michigan Avenue. Did you go into that and try? I'm like, wow. Great pizza. Did you go in?
I discovered, I discovered pretzel bread when I was there. Everything I ate was pretzel bread. It was amazing.
The best pizza I've ever had.
I didn't make it to a pizza place. I was going to this place called Joe's Craft. I mean, there was a lot of engineering meetings. I went to Weber's, you know, the grill. The Weber Grill. I ate there twice. Two customers ate twice. Kept on taking the people to the same restaurant because it's so hard to get in.
When you find a good thing, you kind of have to stick with it.
I went back to another place, the place Liverpool, because there was something else in my menu I wanted to have.
Y'all ready to go?
Okay, Jeff. Is everybody ready?
We've got our folks here, right?
Everybody ready? Dan, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Hey, John, you ready? Gary, you gonna?
The November 13th meeting of the Missouri City Planning and Zoning Commission is hereby called to order. We have a quorum here tonight. We're missing three commissioners. And you have the names, Nancy. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number three, the minutes. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
Let me make it.
Just second to that?
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the minutes? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, the minutes from last month are approved as presented. Moving on to agenda item number four, reports. The commission's reports. I have one thing I would like to say as chairman. On Election Day, November the 5th, we were lucky that Lita Sani, our representative from Houston Community College, was reelected. And that position calls for six years on the, on the board. And she has done an excellent job previously, and we are looking forward to have her for another, another six years. So that completes my report. Anyone else? Anybody? John?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on. The staff reports. Gary?
Thank you. Want to remind the commission, you have been invited and your presence will be appreciated at the thank you donor reception, 6:00 PM next Tuesday, November 19th, at City Center at Quell Valley. Please be there. The city wants to thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any comments by the commissioners at all? Okay, moving on. The planning representative, Jennifer?
I just want to remind the commissioners that it's that time of year again, Snow Fest Parade is coming up. It's scheduled for December 7th. And if anyone is interested, there's some pictures, flashbacks from last year. But if you are interested in joining us, bringing your family and participating, please let us know. Hopefully by the end of next week. But I'll send an email reminder out to the commission, just to get who's going to participate with us. So, it'll be fun.
All right, thank you. All right, next one on the list. Bailey?
Nothing to report.
Nothing for tonight. Okay, thank you. Agenda item number five, public comments. Is anybody in the audience that would like to step to the podium and address anything which is not on our agenda for tonight? If you would like to do that, please be our guest. If you do come up, there will be no comments made by any of the commissioners, nor will they answer any questions, as the law says, we can't. So would anybody like to step to the podium? Okay, moving on. Agenda item number six, plats. 6A, public hearing in consideration of a final replat for first choice ER Sienna Plantation. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Travis?
Yes, this is a request to re, I'm sorry, to replat an existing Reserve A to have two different reserves in order to facilitate the development of a ER clinic. There are some staff comments that need to be addressed, but staff feels like we can work with the applicants to get those taken care of before bringing the milor in for signatures by the commission.
Okay, are they still going to put the clinic on Reserve B?
That is still the intent, yes.
And then, then they'll leave the other reserve or whatever they might want to use it for?
Correct. My, my assumption is future sale to some type of commercial buyer. But we, at this time, haven't had them approach us with anybody for the other track.
Okay. All right, is the developer here?
They are not here tonight.
Okay, is this a public hearing? Is anybody that would like to step to the podium and address this public hearing? Do I hear a motion that we close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? 6A, consider approval of the final replat for first choice ER SNF Plantation replat. Do I hear a motion?
Make the motion and send this to City Council with positive recommendation.
Second.
Second on it. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this item at all? Anyone? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, 6A is approved as presented. Okay, moving on to 7A1. Public hearing to receive comments for or against a request by Billy Odell of TBG Partners to rezone an approximate 22.977 acre tract of land from LC3 Retail District to LC2 Retail District to R2 Single Family Residential District. And to the extent such rezoning deviates from the future land use and character map of the comprehensive plan to provide for an amendment therfrom. The subject site is located north and east of Colony Lakes Residential Subdivision, west of Olympia Center, retail shopping center northwest of Oilfield Road, and southwest of State Highway 6. Travis?
Yes, sir. This is a request to rezone a 22, sorry, a 22.977 acre tract of land, which currently has two different zoning classifications, one being LC2, local retail, and the other portion being LC3 Retail District. The applicants have requested to be able to take that entire land area and rezone that all from those two distinct zoning classifications to R2, single-family residential. Staff feels that because they've left a good portion of commercial along the frontage of Highway 6 and Oilfield Road, which would be very accessible to the public and would allow for a good-sized development to go in there, that this would be a wise land use choice and would recommend a positive recommendation for this request, as well as to him in the future land use map to correspond with that use.
Is there about 400 feet in depth there?
Yes.
Okay.
Which will allow for access drives and other things that are necessary for that.
Right. Okay, is the, again, is this is a public hearing? Is the developer here tonight?
Yes. Bill, would you like to?
Would you like to step to the podium and address your project?
Good evening. Bill Oldham with TBG Partners. Just as Travis has explained, it's just the, the track has been zoned LC3 and LC2 for many years. Not even sure the history of how the LC2 got so deep on this track, because it kind of, you know, it's, it didn't quite make sense why it was so deep. And also, it's adjacent to all the single-family. So it made sense if we're going to develop this to develop it with R2 Residential adjacent to this existing single-family and keep the, the commercial up on the front. And that's the plans right now. If we can have the zoning change, that would be the plans to move forward in future development.
Do you have any ideas to when this might take place?
I think as soon as we can get through City Council, I think it would happen fairly quickly. I would think within the next, you know, next first quarter, second quarter, next year, we try to start with plans.
Well, I like the idea of what you're trying to do here, leaving that part up front for commercial. That's good.
Yeah, it makes sense.
How many homes? I'm sorry.
No, go on.
How many homes do you?
You know, I, right now, I don't think it's been tied down exactly on what the product would be, but I would assume probably in the 60 to 70 homes, probably, if you did about, it leaves us, we have about 20 acres left in there, 22, so about four houses to the acre, something in that range.
Okay. And we will have preliminary and final plats coming before you all for those lots. If the zoning is approved.
Any other questions?
So there's been no other commercial interest in this property?
Not, not in, not that deep. There has been interest, actually adjacent to this property, just to the west on Highway 6. There actually, I think there's a ER or one of those, you know, quick little shops there. There's also been a lot of interest in that track. And that's the issue, there's so much interest along Highway 6, that's great prime real estate for retail. But when you start going deep and then you also, you're neighboring against homes, it just doesn't seem to be the most attractive spot. And also talk about the depth, you mentioned 400 feet. It is approximately 400 feet, but we're lined up with the median cut that currently exists on Lake Olympia, so that we can have in and out off Lake Olympia, not causing any traffic problems. Now, that's part, something that we will be doing too as the TIA to prove that up.
Well, you've squared it up.
That's right.
And that's the, that's the important thing. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, is this also is a public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to step to the podium and address this project?
I, just so the commission knows, we did receive one letter of protest regarding this application.
All right, do I hear a motion, close public hearing? So moved. Second to that?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, that handles that agenda item.
Let me make a motion and send this to City Council with positive recommendation.
I'll second your motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this particular item? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the item is approved. Okay, 7B. Public hearing to receive comments for or against a request by Reverend Father Joshua George Beano George for a specific use permit for approximate 2 or 3.06 acre tract of land to allow for the development of a church and community center, and to the extent such rezoning deviates from the future land use and character map of the comprehensive plan to provide for an amendment therfrom. The subject site is located north of Watts Plantation Road, north of the Estates of Silver Ridge Residential Subdivision, and west of Knights Road. Jennifer?
This is a request for a specific use permit to allow for the location of a permanent worship facility. This, the ortho is before you right now. It shows you the approximate site. Let me go to the elevation. The church that has purchased this property and plans to locate their worship facility, the pastors here and members of the congregation are here, so I'll let them tell a little bit about the church. I won't go into that detail. But just a little overview of what they're planning. A 5,000 square foot building would be a one-story building consisting of CMU and stucco with a metal roof. There is a site plan that was included in the commissioner's package, and it includes the footprint of the one single-story building and the possibility of a future 5,000 square foot building also being located on the site. Staff's recommendations, and I'll, I'll go through them. For the use itself, for the SUP, staff is recommending to approve, to allow for the church to locate on this property, approve the SUP. We have some comments under ingress and egress regarding the driveway placement, but particularly the shared access, as the commission knows, we do require shared access for non-residential uses. And this is a little peculiar, because the site that the church has purchased is still sandwiched in an area that is largely residential in character. And there are some existing single-family homes adjacent to this property, and the underlying zoning or the existing zoning of this property is for a single-family residential. So it's a little peculiar in terms of the shared access, but staff is recommending that with the SUP ordinance, if it is approved, that there is a provision within the ordinance that requires the shared access in the event that the adjacent properties are ever rezoned to a non-residential use. And let me back up a little bit on staff's recommendation for the use. The ortho doesn't show it, but I know, the commission is aware that the Ford bin parkway has been, is in the process of being extended, and so that would run just to the north of the site. There is a house between where the church has purchased their site and where the toll road runs. But the new addition of the toll road and future plans for Watts Plantation and Knights Road may change the overall character of that stretch. And that's part of what's behind staff's recommendation to allow for the church use in the middle of what's existing residential. But that also brings up the issue of utilities. And as, you know, the commission is aware, and there is some background in the staff report, the closest lift station is right behind the Kroger, right there at Highway 6, which is quite a distance from the church's property. That area is presently, there's a water line that runs down Watts Plantation, but there are no septic water, wastewater services within proximity of the site. So we've met with the church several times, and they've run some cost estimates and determined that it, it would be pretty expensive for them to try to tie in or to extend the public systems. And so they are requesting to use a private onsite septic system. Now, as the commission knows, the city does not allow for private septic systems to be used for non-residential uses. And there is, you know, concern in terms of contamination and the density of those types of units, and specifically, as we see the toll road and future development for that area. So there are concerns there. So staff is recommending to disapprove the allowance for a private septic system on the church's site. In addition to that, staff is also recommending that if the church builds there, that it should conform to all of our development standards, minimum standards. That includes landscaping, buffering in particular, because, again, it's sandwiched in a residential district. So to protect the property owners on either side, and also to provide a measure of privacy and screening. The landscaping standards as they stand, architectural design standards as they stand, parking standards, and so on. What I didn't mention was staff is recommending the LC2 Commercial District. Regulations apply up under this SUP, and that would essentially limit the height of the building. They're planning for a one-story building, so we're not talking about, you know, a five-story structure. But the LC2 would give some provisions that would protect those adjacent residential areas. So, if the commission has any questions?
I have one concern here, really, the rest of the project looks okay from my perspective, but I am concerned about this septic system. How long will it be before we might have a public system?
And I will let Public Works. I'll let Public Works respond to that question.
Bailey?
Well, my understanding is that for a public system to be installed, that would require infrastructure to be constructed down Knights Court and along Watts Plantation. And I understand that we've put in the comment that it would be within a reasonable distance.
Well, how long a period of time do you think it will be before this public system would be available? Because somewhere in there, somewhere in there, those things would have to tie in.
Yes, and we do not have a timeframe for that at this point in time.
I guess.
I guess.
It's not in any recent capital improvement plan.
It's not, it's not in our capital improvement plan. And my understanding is it's based on developer need. So I'm not aware of any other interests in the nearby areas. I really don't have a guess I can give you.
Well, the contamination problem worries me.
Absolutely.
I think we've got a major, major hassle there.
But right now, our ordinance says that if a developer were to put houses on these same three acres, let's say, two per acre, three per acre, acre slots, they would be allowed to have each a septic system for a house, but because it's a commercial three acres, our ordinance says they can't.
These, planning and zoning in City Council has removed the onsite water and septic provision from all the city ordinances. The only way that could occur is through an SUP or PD zoning classification, specifically allowing that. There is no straight rezoning that would allow onsite for either residential or commercial.
Okay. So the ones that were grandfathered over at Sienna?
They're grandfathered as lots of record on that.
And the same thing down there at Silver Ridge?
That is correct.
Well, they are allowed for residential use, lots of record.
For lots of record, but no new, without a PD or a SUP?
No, they are, for lots of record.
Yes.
But?
Any lots of record at that time can develop with septic. But if somebody came in today and said, I'd like a water well and septic subdivision, they could only do that through a PD zoning classification, not a straight rezoning.
In and our, well, it depends on the zoning district. If it's, if it's R1, then they can for an existing lot of record or a lot that's already plotted, but not for non-residential.
So the grandfathered section, meaning that if it's already plotted as residential lots, they can do it? But new, coming before us, they would not be able to? But this current septic systems, I mean, are we finding that there's contamination? Is this thing really consistent? Any?
Well, there's a number of, when, when council adopted this, there was a number of issues. And it wasn't just septic. The city's ISO rating for fire protection depends upon having, what areas have fire hydrants is a big factor. Normal acreage lots, on-site water well and septic hurt the city's ISO rating. That was one of the considerations. Now, that's a waterside for that consideration. At that time, there was also a concern that as the city develops, onsite septic could propose, could pose issues, and that the city ultimately one day may be helping facilitate removal of this. We've had a number of requests over the years in some of the Fieldcrest subdivision to help facilitate this type of activity. But I do not know of any record of contamination that exists out there today.
Okay. All right, any other comments by the commissioners? Okay, Scott, thank you right now. All right, is this is a public hearing? Have we got the developer? Is the developer here?
I'll be representing the developer.
Okay, would you step to the podium, sir?
Okay, good evening. My name is Harrison Max Builders. I guided our client through the design, schematic design and the SUP process. I would like to give a thanks to Jennifer. She's helped us out a lot on this project, so, first thing is, I have a couple of reasons that a septic tank is a lifeline for this project, you guys aligning this. Because, first thing is the cost. To bring that line over to our property is costing us approximately $500,000 to $600,000. That doesn't fit the church's budget right now. We did a cost analysis on it, and this is a small church, so they cannot afford to bring that line over to that property. Second reason would be, we have done this type of septic system in other commercial projects in different cities. I understand that Missouri City has their own rules and regulations that you guys, that we have to abide by, but it is done in other cities and it is allowed in other cities. So something you guys might want to consider to get this approved. Number third is this will be temporary. Once a line is crossing our property, we will tie into that line. So Jennifer did mention that, and once the line is provided, we will tie into that line. Number four is, this is a very important project for the church, because the members, majority of the members, 90% of the members reside within the city of Missouri City. And that's why it's vital that this project gets approved, so. I would like a church member to comment if you were.
Jennifer, can I ask a quick question? Is interior sprinkler systems required on a structure like this?
It's, it's based on the square footage at 5,000, and then it depends on the design, the number of exits, the width. So based on the square footage, it probably wouldn't be, but that would be the fire marshal that would give that determination.
Because it stands right now, they don't have a fire hydrant, and they're not required to have interior sprinklers?
There is a water line, so I'm not sure. Yeah, there might be a fire hydrant.
Just for clarification, the request, if I'm understanding correctly, would be onsite septic but public water. There is a water line that runs on Watts Plantation today.
So in terms of fire protection, they have, they'll have a hydrant in the?
Yes, it's only for a septic system that we're asking.
Thank you.
All right, sir, will you step to the podium?
Thank you.
Say your name.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is KJ Joseph. I'm a board member of the St. Mary's Orthodox Church. Just want to say a few words. I think Harris has covered it very well. So I'm going to be very frank with, with you. I mean, we are a small church. We have about 48 members, paying members, so probably about, just about 100 over individuals. Having a sanitary system that costs us between $500,000 to $800,000 is absolutely a, it's a gamestopper for us. I mean, the church we're planning to build, it's only probably going to cost us about $350,000. So I think, I mean, stopping this project just because of this, I think it's going to be very unfortunate for us. And the other thing I want to say is, our facility is going to be purely for worship. We don't plan to have any commercial activities, like a daycare or any Monday to Friday kind of activities. It's going to be basically Sunday. And I don't think there's going to be a huge volume in terms of, excuse me, if so saying sewage or whatever. So I think a septic tank would be appropriate at this moment. And we would, we will, we will support the notion, we will support, so Jennifer's department had given us this reply stating that once the public system is in place, that they would, they strongly recommend that we tie in. And we will do that. We give you our word that we will do that. But asking us to build, asking us to build a public sanitary system in order to develop that area, so to speak, I think is just a huge burden, and I think it's a little bit unfair. Other than that, I mean, that area is not a real prime commercial area, so it's not really a lost opportunity for you guys. I mean, it's primarily a very residential area, and I'm sure the residents there would appreciate a church being there. Like I said, there's not going to be many, much activities Monday to Friday, so there won't be a huge volume of traffic. So it's basically going to be a couple of hours on Sunday. And so this is basically a dream project for us. I mean, we are part of, we are part of the Indian Orthodox Diocese of Southwest America. I mean, we are part of, we are part of the Indian Orthodox Diocese of Southwest America. We have around 700 members in Greater Houston. Our church is part of that diocese, and we have chosen Missouri City as our, our site. Our bishop, our bishop resides in Missouri City. I mean, that only goes to show that, I mean, he could have chosen any city within Greater Houston, but he chose Missouri City. He chose Missouri City because it's a God fearing and a church friendly city. And, you know, there's a reason why he chose it. This is going to be a huge disappointment for us if we can't get this through, simply because we can't, you know, we can't afford to build a public sanitary system. So I have appealed to you tonight to have a favorable consideration and, and help us with this. Thank you.
I think it's awesome that you, that you chose Missouri City. I just have a couple of questions for you. At 48 members, let's say you have 70 folks here now, you have the bishop...
Paying members, sorry.
Paying members. So you have the bishop in here. So your goal is you have a facility and you want to expand like all churches, I hope. Do you have a projection? What's the, and I'm trying to look at where's the connection point between when we can supply sewer and how big is your church going to be before we get there? And I'm just trying to be the voice of the city.
Sure, sure.
To say, okay, let's say it takes three years, five years, and now you go from 70, so let's, now you have 270. I'm looking at the practical matter of how big is a septic system? Can it handle it? The concerns about contamination, could they be true considering we want to protect those residents surrounding you? And let's just say that because the city's experienced subdivisions that have asked for help in removing old septic systems that have been supplied water and sewer, I'm guessing, would you be open to helping with that cost? Let's say that you got connected to the city sewer, and now you have a septic system that's been there for, let's say, however many years. What happens to that septic system? Because, you know, once you live here, you know, it can sit there for a lot of years.
So are you asking if, once, after we tie up to a public system, how do we dispose of the septic?
Right.
Yeah, we will...
We will dispose.
We will dispose it however we, I mean...
And how big do you think your church will be in, let's say, five years?
We, you know, the building we plan is planned for about 200 members. I mean, we don't really expect to grow that fast with a huge number of people in the next five to 10 years. Like I said, we are part of a diocese. There's about four other churches in Greater Houston. So just, we are just one of them. We are the smallest of the lot. So we don't really expect to grow that big in the next five to 10 years. So I don't think it's going to be a huge issue there. And yes, we will, we will dispose of it in the best manner possible. We have our contractor here as well who can talk to...
Let me ask you a question, sir. When did you buy the property?
We bought the property December 2012.
2012, it's September.
December.
December?
December 2012.
Last year, last December.
Okay, were you aware at that particular point in time, or did you check and ask any questions as to whether or not we might have a problem with the septic system, knowing that there wasn't any public system close by?
At that time, no, sir, no. We, we purchased it without, without asking the city, no. We did not ask those questions.
I had a question. What's the maximum amount of parishioners you could have in that church with the design you have now?
It's 200.
So that the building as it stands now is designed for maximum capacity of 200 people. Would you plan on expanding that building, or is that taking up all the area? That's pretty much what...
The other 5,000 that we're going to be adding later is going to only be used for gatherings. It's going to be the same members that's going to be using the additional addition that we're doing.
So the septic system, if, if we went down this road and the septic system you put in would be sized for 200?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
So the first building we plan to build is a hall, a community hall, and then down the road is going to be a church, a proper church, but it's going to be for the same number of people.
Yes.
We don't expect...
So you're not expecting your, your congregation to grow beyond that 200 because of the other three or four churches you have?
Yeah, we have, yeah. Do we have other churches in the diocese? Like I said, it's the smallest and the youngest, so we don't really expect an exponential growth in the next five to 10 years.
When do you anticipate building the second building?
We don't really have a plan at the moment. We would, I would say five to 10 years.
So it's going to cost you about $350,000 to build this current building?
Yeah.
And that, is that including the cost of the septic tank?
No, it's not including the cost.
How much is that?
Septic system, we got approximately cost about $300,000 to $500,000, even more because we don't know the line.
Septic.
Septic.
Oh, the septic system, we're looking at about 400, 400...
So another 50,000?
Yeah.
Okay, you said that you had built one in other cities. What cities, where, what type of facility?
Harris, can you come up to the microphone?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Come on up.
We've actually done a daycare center in Harris County and City of Houston, which they allowed us. Now, this was two, three years back, so I don't know if codes have changed, but City of Houston does allow septic system in commercial properties.
Where's that daycare?
Daycare is located off of 249 in Leweta.
Do you have any other locations that'd be more comparable to what you're doing here as opposed to daycare center?
Well, understand daycare is the usage that they're going to be using, it's approximately same usage as a daycare. I mean, their members are only 200. It's a small church.
It's only a one day a week.
It's only one day a daycare.
Daycare is used every day.
Every day.
Very good.
Just a couple of hours on Sunday.
What kind of numbers did you quote there about having, if you were required to go and hook into a public system?
Based on the map that we got, to the closest lift station, we're looking at about 800 linear feet and, no, no, 800 linear feet of bringing the pipe to that lift station. So it's about $800,000 to bring that line over to his property. That just for, bring it to his property from the lift station.
Scott, does that seem to be a reasonable figure? Or is it high, low, or whatever?
I really can't answer that without knowing how he's designing his system. Normally on something like that, we would just do something like a grinder pump and a horse mane type thing. When we did a similar type system for Fire Station 4 before there were public utilities in that area, that was about a $30,000, $40,000 project for about 1,000 linear feet of horse mane on that. So I do not know the system he's designing on that, so I can't answer it really.
This was done by a site contractor that they got, there was a preliminary cost that was offered because there's no engineering drawings as of right now.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
And also, commissioners, we, we, you will have to cross the new Fort Bend feeder road tollway that's being built, and that's going to be a lot of complications there. I don't know what, what we're going to, what kind of issues we're going to hit with that. So it all sounds like it's going to be pretty expensive for us.
I would say that he's got a valid point on crossing the Fort Bend Toll Road Authority because they would require that in all probability, well, I know they would require that to be a border under the toll road, which does increase the suspense, expense significantly. So that is a valid point that toll road authority crossing could increase the price significantly.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Is this as a public hearing? Is anybody in the audience that would like to step to the podium and address this project? Anyone? All right, do I hear a motion that we close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second, all right, it's been moved and seconded. We closed the public hearing. All those in favor, those opposed? Scott, would you step to the podium one more time, please? Hate to keep running you back and forth. Apologize.
Getting a little heavier than I planned.
No, stop it. As a very talented professional engineer, which you are, looking at what we've already discussed and what the recommendation on this has been, if we were to approve this private septic system? Are we going to really technically endanger ourselves here? And if we go for an extended period of time, is this going to do any damage to us?
The, there's really two answers to that. But the big safeguard is if it's approved as the applicant requests, he still has to follow all Texas Commission on Environmental Quality rules and regulations for the installation of the septic system, which includes sanitary control easements and distance from other adjacent occupied dwellings and so forth and so on. And those rules are pretty good rules. I mean, they, so, and they're, they're put in place for the health and safety of the public. So by approving this, that does not relieve him of any health and safety burdens put on him by Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. It just becomes an issue between him and TCUQ on that. I can say that this type of situation is not unknown in Missouri City. For example, the country store that was located at Vicksburg and Highway 6 prior to Walmart being in there, prior to public utilities being there, had a septic system on a temporary basis until public utilities were available. And the city itself, when Fire Station 4 was built, at that time out in the country, there was no utilities on Sienna Parkway, travel Fresno. So it is not a situation that is unknown in the city on that. Staff's recommendations based upon city ordinances, but that's why this process is allowed to come through P&amp;Z and council for their ultimate decision on that. So it could be done, and it could be done safely.
Does the country store still have their septic system?
No, when, when public utilities were made available in that area, they decommissioned their septic system and installed, or connected to the public utilities in that area.
Voluntarily, or is that...
It was a condition that, in the ordinance, just like it would be if y'all choose to do so here. I think the, I guess the big sticking point that would probably need to be nailed down is what's defined as reasonable location or reasonably available on that. You know, because everybody can have a different definition of when they're reasonably close to the site.
All right. Would your people say continue to, to look after this to make sure that they were living up to all the rules and regulations?
Absolutely. That's our job to do is whatever council and P&amp;Z recommends and council approves and gets final ordinance, that's our job to enforce on that.
All right, any other questions of Scott here? Scott, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you need a bigger parachute if you're being framed? If we go with SUP, what's the wording?
The wording for the septic?
Yes.
I'll let leave and say the staff back.
We could probably do something conditional on facility. He's located south of the right of the toll road, closer than some certain distance as determined to be appropriate by staff.
Well said. Can I quote you on that? What he said?
I have one more question. What about based on growth, size, time?
Time, yeah, that's what I'm concerned with, time. How long, how long does this condition stay in place?
They're going to grow. To come and talk to us that you're not going to grow nerves me. I think you're going to grow. I feel confident that you will. So time.
I mean, I have a lot of confidence in septic systems. I mean, I had one until I had city utilities. It's one of those things that I don't think we're opening up a Pandora's box. I think it's a pretty obvious conclusion. I don't want a septic system to remain there for 25 years after the city council, but there's a lot of regulations involving septic systems.
If I can throw out, I'm not making any recommendation, but throw out a couple of possibilities on that. Probably the closest in the foreseeable future septic system that would occur, let me walk over. I'm sorry, it's actually not on this map, but immediately to the west of the map is the Schindler property that is probably going to be developed in the next few years, and that would be part of the municipal utility district in Sienna. And they would probably have septic, but that's still just as long of a run as it is to the lift station behind the New Quest facility on that. But if y'all were interested in time, there could be a possibility that, and I'll have to defer to legal on this, that you could set a time limit where they would have to come back and get a renewal on that. And at that time, it could be looked at if there's something reasonable at that timeframe. I don't know if legal's ready to go with my brainstorm yet.
That would be something we'd have to research and get back to if, if you want a specific time tied down.
Well, if we extend for a period of time and then nothing happens, then what do we do? Obviously, I don't think anybody up here wants to have a private system for any type of an extended period of time because there is the, there is the possibility of the contamination at any time.
In all honesty, I do not see a city-run system, septic, and I could, something could come out of the blue in the next few years, but a city-run septic system out here in the five to 10 year timeframe, sorry, septic system, a city-run water, sanitary sewer system out here in a five to 10 year timeframe on that. I just don't see what's going on and what's being built, that being constructed in that timeframe within a reasonable distance of that property.
There's other things going on, yeah. Okay.
And I guess what I'm saying is at 48 paying members, and they have an opportunity to grow, to grow their church. It's the same with any other business or anybody. As a matter of fact, you have to save in order to get the things that are needed to, you know, properly facilitate the facility.
If they exceed 200 members, they could always add another septic system? Is that a, or if it does, if it was exceeded the throughput, it would cause problems, wouldn't it, I would imagine? So they'd have to address it headcount or one way or the other. It's not like they just put in for 200, and if they add a 600 person congregation, they run into challenges possibly.
With an SUP, do they have to come back for any further development of that land?
Well, they'll have to go through the standard permitting process. And so occupancy will be tied, the permitting process based on, you know, the, the type of seating that they have in the facility. And so they'll have to post the maximum occupancy for that building. If a new building is constructed, it could be the same process, but it would be the standard permitting, building permit, plan review process.
A question. Can a septic system be cleaned?
Oh, yes.
Cleaned, yes.
Okay, so explain to me how we're looking at becoming obsolete or overfield.
I'm not sure I follow you, Commissioner.
Well, I'm saying from the aspect that if it becomes more members, couldn't it be cleaned more often?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I see what you're saying. There are different ways that a septic system can be expanded to accommodate new members. That, that, that's not an issue. And I can tell you that modern septic systems are whole world improved over what they were 30, 40, 50 years ago, you know, especially spray systems and aerobic systems out there on that. It can be done safely.
Okay.
And it can be done safely and it can be expanded. There's going to be probably a limit on how much it could be expanded based upon the size of their site, but I believe they'll be happy to have that problem that their church has grown so much that they have that many parishioners on that. As I said before, this is not anything that, that has not happened before in this city or in other jurisdictions on that. Possibly if the commission is leaning towards approving this with a private septic system, staff and the applicant can sit down between now and going to council and come up with a mutually satisfactory solution on how this can be ultimately converted to a public system on that, and we can present that with, to council.
Well, I was raised on a septic system on the farm in Oklahoma, so I'm somewhat familiar with them.
Yeah, and, and modern septic systems are all different than they were 40 years ago.
I'm ready to make a motion. I make a motion that we forward this on to council with the use of the septic system on site.
council with the use of the septic system on site, but meeting those conditions that you just said.
I second that motion.
They need to get together with you and make a plan.
Then we get together, we work with the parishioners to present a mutually agreeable solution on when it or how it would get convertible. And we'll work with legal on that to make sure everything's all kosher on that and then bring it forward to council with that recommendation.
Scott, you always get put on the spot, don't you?
Okay, we have your motion.
That's what I'm.
No, that's a good answer. That's the reason why we're asking you, you know. A motion.
John, second the motion.
Okay, you're gonna second that motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this project at all?
I have one thing to say, and it's just for the record. Please, please, when you guys buy these properties, find out all of the information. It is so important. And, and I'm really making this motion against my, you know, really because I want to try my best to follow the rules of the city. But I get what you're trying to do. I understand that there just isn't anything out there. And I wish you growth. I do. So go for it, but please, please, please.
Can I ask you to also talk about the requirement that the septic system be removed in a timely manner when city services are then connected?
I'm in my motion to include that.
Well, one reason why that I've had an issue with this, my daughter owns property up in College Station, and she has a private system on her property, and she's had a lot of hassle with that. And so it is alarming and it needs to be addressed. But I think, Scott, based on what you indicated here, that you can, you can work with them and then work with the legal people and so forth.
Absolutely.
And then get this all together because I'm like Sonya here, I'm still on the fence post with this.
Have some favor.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on it? Anyone? All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, the motion is approved.
Y'all all just got us all fired.
We wish y'all the best. And if you have any problems at all, there's a man right there.
That's the one.
Get with him.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just remind the commission that their motion is appropriate under our zoning ordinance under the specific use permit provisions because you may impose conditions as are reasonable and necessary considering the use and including protecting a neighboring property owners. So those conditions that you have put in place are appropriate under our ordinance.
Okay, do we need to revoke this?
No, you did good. I was commending the commission for doing a good job.
He said, "We're not gonna get fired."
Hopefully offering some comfort.
That means we get to stay on. All right, let's move.
Pike Road.
The next one give me a headache.
Well, we did a good job with that, gentlemen. And ladies? Okay, moving on to agenda item number 7C, a public hearing to receive comments for or against a request by LSNA Group, Inc. to amend the regulations and restrictions pertaining to PD Plan Development District Number 55 and to extend such rezoning, and to the extent such rezoning deviates from the future land use and character map of the comprehensive plan to provide for an amendment therefrom. The subject site is located north of Townland, south of Stafford Road, and east of Pike Road at the limits of the city of Missouri City, Texas.
And this is an amendment to cover two things. The first, and I'm gonna do them out of order, but the first and primary one is the issue of outside storage. And as stated, this PD was approved in 2006, and as part of the PD, it prohibited outside storage, but it is an industrial business park. And all of our industrial users are permitted to have a certain degree of outside storage contingent on it being screened from public view either by masonry wall or landscaping. And so the developer of Chance Crossing has a potential tenant who is looking at constructing a building, and they do have a need for outside storage. So they've approached us. The site plan that was submitted shows the future development that would continue that industrial office park down on Pike Road. But staff's recommendation is to amend the ordinance and allow for outside placement materials, that whole allowance, consistent with industrial use districts. And, you know, as summarized, it would be screened from view. The other is, the applicant is working on various designs for the new buildings and has introduced this type of plastic to be used. It could have the appearance of a window could be used instead of glass. And it has some energy-saving qualities to it, but allows natural light to continue to flow through the building. And so the architect has designed some of the warehouses to incorporate this material. Staff is recommending to allow them to do that conditioned on it being clear. There are, these examples were included in your staff reports, and so it includes, there's all kinds of colors, well, not all kinds, but a metallic-looking color, opal, there's different looks to this product, and it also can have a ripple look to it as well. So staff is recommending that consistent with our architectural standards, even for an industrial area, that they be permitted to use this material to provide that flexibility for their building design and for their users, but that it have the appearance still of a window from the outside view. What is not included, it's included in the applicant's proposal, but they would be proposing three feet by five-feet sized sheets. Staff didn't include that in the recommendation, but if the commission desires to limit the size of those panels per wall, then that can be done as well through this PD amendment.
Let me ask this question right quick, Jennifer. I go along with the clear parts, and no problem there. Can it be slick as opposed to be rippling?
I'll let the architect speak a little bit more about the product.
And as he comes up, I just have one quick question too. Is this only for this particular client, or once we do this, would this be for future?
And the way staff's recommendation is, it would give them, they would be able to do it for any future buildings constructed and possibly redo existing. So it's not locked into just one building based on the recommendation.
Good evening. I'm Robert Lei Su.
Yes, sir.
As Jennifer said, there are all kinds of designs out there. Some of them, like you said, have the ripple effect. They are clear, though. It's polycarbonate. It's a new product that does not change in color like the old plastics that we used to see on the corugated skylights and so on and so forth. There is some corrugations designed to have designs on it, and there are some other designs that are double-layered, and they have ribs inside. So it would be, you still, because it being clear, you can still see the spline in between the two layers. That's another design. We have not really decided on anything yet. Primarily, the reason why I brought it up is because instead of using electricity inside a huge building warehouse, and we are wasting so much energy in doing that to allow natural light, and instead of the natural light being from the top, just allow the natural light at the very top of the wall where the roof and the wall meet is what we normally call clarity story. So as being energy conscious and with now with the new energy codes and so on and so forth, we introduce this as a savings on energy. We would not intend to put it everywhere. We intended to.
Do you have the site plan?
I do. The site plan or the elevation?
I'm sorry, the site plan. So that they can see, yeah, there you go. You can see the buildings back to back over there and in that green area in between. And we intended to put it where the buildings are back to back. You will not be, from the street, you may be able to see a little bit of an angle, but we may end up putting a tree or something to block. And at the same time, it will allow natural light to go in. And we were going to use a green area in between the buildings to also put AC units and so on and so forth so that they will be hidden from view. Okay? The only track will be the first track that will be exposed at this point in time. Eventually, whenever we keep on developing, it will be something similar to that. We are talking to another client that is more of a two-story commercial kind of a thing. They will probably be at the corner. That's why we are saving those lots. We are just talking about the polycarbonate.
Yeah.
And I will address the other issue about the outside storage, but if you have any questions, so that we can finish on the polycarbonate.
Let me ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
What is the longevity connected with a product of this nature?
It's 50 years. Depending on, you know, it will not fade and turn yellow like the other ones that used to turn yellow after 20 years or whatever it is.
Hurricane and windproof?
Yeah, I will design that for those. You will have, you know, you will have splines and so on, like glass.
Like glass.
You know, yeah, you will have the metal behind or in front, either way, I can make it look like a window. I, we still, we're still fooling around with it.
Tweaking it, yeah.
And make it pleasing.
Will it break like glass?
It's plastic. It will, it will shatter, yeah. It will, if you hit it with a bullet, then, you know, it will shatter like, like any glass.
Is it gonna scratch easy? Somebody from the inside whack it with a piece of?
Well, somebody would really have to have the intent to do that because it's gonna be 15 feet up in the air.
Right.
Oh, that's right. Even from the inside.
Not, it will not be, it will not be accessible unless you climb up there and.
It wouldn't be swinging from the raptors, is it?
Right. Yes, sir.
Okay, talk to us about the storage, the outside storage.
All right, on, as you can see the site, we already have some buildings over there. And they are, at that time, it was grandfathered as, you know, allowing some metal panels and so on and so forth. This time around, we will design it as all tilt wall with reveals, make it look proper. And then the entrances, there will be storefront material that will go up, you know, 15 feet or whatever. And we did a little rendering. I don't know if you have.
Yeah, I can.
So the intent here is to be more on the, well.
This is building A.
Yeah, was there a 3D rendering there or?
Oh, no. No, I don't have that.
Okay. We did a 3D rendering also to kind of depict, you know, what it will look like. My client is, what they have right now is primarily offices and warehouses. In offices, warehouses, there is not a big deal to have outside storage or not. We are, or my client is trying to go into the manufacturing in order to bring the revenues, you know, all, both for the city and themselves. And there is a lot of interest from some of the oilfield companies in having crane-ready buildings. So the future development, when I first approached Jennifer in the, in the future, and we have a future development now because Jennifer said, "Robert, you cannot put outside storage." And I said, "Okay, well, let's shelf that." My client says, "Ah," whatever, and he said, "Okay, I just do office warehouses." And I'm trying to get him more into the industrial side and manufacturing side. And as you can see from the future development, the access storage is really on the back. The lots are very deep, it's about 300 and something feet deep. And behind on the back is a regional detention pond, so nobody's gonna see it. So we are going to put it on the very back in the future development. Now, you can see the area that we, yeah, those are the areas that we intend for the clients, they have cranes, to, you know, have some of their equipment. They need to have, yeah, they need to have equipment, material, storage, and so on and so forth. We will screen them according to the architectural standards. And so we just needed to get it formalized so that when I go for the actual permitting and so on and so forth, I will have less fights with Jennifer.
I just want to make a comment about the screening part because although it's Stafford on the opposite side of the detention pond, you wouldn't want to see giant rolls of spools of cable or steel or whatever it could be, but if they took the time and you guys.
It's on the very back.
Yeah.
Yes, it's on the very back. We definitely do not intend to put it on the front.
No, no, I'm saying when you look at this, on the opposite side of the retention pond, there's residents that Stafford that will see that.
Yeah, it's a mobile home area, I think, yes.
No, it's not mobile homes, they're homes.
Oh, they are homes? Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I cycle through there all the time. So I'm saying is, I like the idea of having it in the back. It's in the back from Pike Road, but the residents on the opposite side in Stafford will see into the back of that now construction slash manufacturing area. If you guys are, are you gonna address screening for that so people can't see it from the opposite side of, you know, out of that residence neighborhood there?
In other words, in other words, can you completely screen it?
Yes, we can.
Where it can't be seen from either side?
Well, I, here again, I'm not familiar with me on the other side.
Well, if you look in the map, you can see all the houses right there.
Over here, at the top, on the other side of the detention pond.
If that's a big detention pond, I do not know what the distance is. I remember doing a shopping center with you guys some time ago, and there was a rule about 1,000.
Visibility.
Yeah, visibility was 1,000 feet or something like that.
To be aware of it, I mean, we're in Missouri City, but Stafford is our neighbors, and those residents, if there was an eyesore, they wouldn't appreciate it because it is a nice view from their houses now.
Is there a plan for perimeter fence or anything along that rear?
We have not, if we need to, we can do that, but it would not be a masonry, it would just be a winged tining or something like that.
But you have to be aware.
Let me ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
When do you plan to build these other seven buildings?
That's a nice view here, think about it.
Now.
Now, right now?
Yes. I'm in design process right now.
Okay, you're gonna build them all at the same time?
I hope that I can go for permitting in the next couple of months and, you know, go to work next year.
You're gonna build them all at the same time, then?
Yes.
All goes up at once, yeah.
But the five that are there that I'm designing right now, and hopefully, if you approve the other two, we will build the other two too.
Okay, any other questions of this gentleman?
No.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is this a public hearing? Is anybody out there that would like to address this project?
I make a motion that we close the public hearings.
All right, is there a second to that?
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Do we hear a motion from here?
Promoted.
Positive.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded on this project. Any, any further discussion at all? John, anybody? Okay, here none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, this project is approved. Okay, moving on from here, this is agenda item number eight, zoning text amendments, 8A, it's a public hearing to receive comments for or against the city's land use regulations regarding pawn shops. Gary?
All those waiting for Jennifer to speak up, but the reason this is before you again is last month I failed to include step two on the agenda and therefore your action would perhaps have been voidable, and we certainly wouldn't want that if somebody challenged the regulations later. I believe there may have been a minor variation to the definition.
Yes.
So there's additional reason to bring it back, although off the top of my head, I don't recall the definition.
It tracks the state, the state finance code. And so it is included in the staff report, but further defines what would be considered as a pawn shop.
In essence, this is substantially the same as you approved last time. It's just we failed to properly take the second step on making the recommendation to city council, and we're asking you to do that again.
Is there any punishment involved for your mistake?
I'll give you one better, John. I'll give you one better, John.
I have.
I forgive you personally. I might make a motion that we send this on to council.
We have to close the public hearing.
Oh, is this a public hea...
Do I hear a motion that we close the public hearing?
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, make your motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this item at all, anyone? Here none? All those in favor? Raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, eight A is approved as presented.
I thought it was a joke. I did.
We had, we had two priests here, and you granted me absolution.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
All I can get.
Moving on, agenda item eight B. Public hearing to receive comments for or against the city's land use regulations regarding payday lenders.
Yeah, this is a final report. And it is indicated as such on the agenda. There have been changes to the definition. And again, just to clarify what is considered and what we're calling credit access businesses, but what we consider that to be. And so that tracks, again, the state finance code and state codes in terms of regulations for those types of businesses. Largely, this is what we've discussed before. The recommendations previously, requirement for a specific use permit only permitted within the LC three, LC four, BP, and industrial district. The regulation change between preliminary report and this final report is staff is recommending to go ahead and add the distance requirement that we talked about from the mesquite ordinance during the discussion part. And so we are recommending to apply a distance requirement to the lot that the business might be located in. And again, the further aim is to prevent clustering of certain types of uses, this particular type of use within any particular area. And so our recommendation is that a lot containing a credit access business may not be closer than a thousand feet from another lot containing a credit access business. So they could not go side by side in a shopping center.
Makes sense.
And I do want to share, because Commissioner O'Malley was interested in what other communities were doing. And at the last meeting, it was the day before the TML conference and the session on payday lending and some of the approaches that TML is taking. And what I would like to share with the commission is it's all still, the regulations are all still very new. None of the zoning regulations that cities have implemented have been challenged. TML is trying to take a collective approach with communities having like ordinances, similar standards, so that it can be, so that it will hold up in court. And so some of the communities, Dallas, Austin, some of the smaller communities, there's probably about ten, ten to twelve communities that have adopted other business practice ordinances to regulate payday lending. And they're going through different lawsuits at this time. And so it's still preliminary to know what the outcome of those challenges will be. But we feel comfortable with applying zoning regulations at this time to try to lessen the impact on Missouri City.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing?
A second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, do I hear a motion?
You do, as presented.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept this as is, as presented. Any further discussion, anyone? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, moving to the last item here on this HC. As this is an executive session item, we need to adjourn, go to the rear, and talk about this project.
I was, I was going to suggest that the commission might consider moving the impact fee discussion item ahead of this, altering the order of your agenda, which you may do. I have to put it this way because your rules of procedure say it has to go in this order. I don't want to violate your rules of procedure, but you can do that. And then perhaps some folks who may not be interested in political signs may be able to escape the meeting.
Well, since we don't have anybody out there, it doesn't matter, does it?
Do we need to make a motion to do that?
Do we have to have a motion?
I make a motion that we suspend the order of the agenda.
Is there a second to that?
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Take it up last. All right, agenda item number nine. That's involving the impact fees. Scott?
This is our standard renewal of the impact fees. There's really been no changes in the land use assumptions or anything else. And staff recommends continuing the impact fee as is, no changes.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I make the motion that we continue.
Have we adopted the report?
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we stay as we are, no change. All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, that takes care of that item. All right, let's adjourn back here and take care of our...
Political signs.
Our executive session, then we'll come back out and vote. All right, we are now reconvened. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion...
For the political signs?
For the political sign discussion, not to call a public hearing for the consideration of changes.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that at all, anybody? Have you got any discussion on your motion?
We've got wings on the mountain.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, there we go. Going to stay the same.
See y'all next Tuesday evening at six o'clock, City Center.
Is that a family function?